Welcome, everybody. This is, my name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the Nashua Zoning Board of the City of Nashua. And this is the January 28th, 2025 meeting. I'll go through some housekeeping, some guidance on the way the meeting will function, and explain a little bit about the procedures and that part of things. And then hopefully, pretty quickly, we'll get right into hearing the cases tonight. So I think I tend to do it a little bit different every time. I think I'll take care of like the first part of our housekeeping, which is just our roll call, and also noting who the members are, and I'll actually do the roll call. So again, my name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. Mr. Steve Lionel is our Vice Chair. And Mr. Josh Neely is one of our full-time members. Uh, Mr. J.B. Boucher is our Clerk. Uh, Mr. J. McCarr is another full-time member. Mr. Andrew Sylvia is one of our alternate members, and so is Mr. Joseph Patrick. And then we have Mr. Sam Durfee, who is the Planning Manager with the City of Nashua. So I'll do the roll call. So, Mr. Patrick?
Present.
Mr. Sylvia?
Here.
Mr. McCarr?
Here.
Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. Lionel?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw is present. So we do have the seven members, we have the seven members that do serve currently on the Board. Again, noting that five of us are full-time members. Way we'll function as far as just procedurally, all seven of us will participate in listening to the cases, asking questions, the discussion that we typically have about the cases, et cetera. It's just that when it comes time in the voting part of things, only the full-time members will be voting. Unless one of the full-time members needs to recuse themselves for some reason from any given case, then one of the alternates would step in for, to be a voting member. And we'll know that before we start to hear the case. And we'll know who it is that will be voting. And if we have more than one of those happening, we'll just alternate between the two alternates. Functionally, the way we work is we are quasi-judicial body, so our, our function is to provide relief to land use situations here in the city. Most of the time, that comes in a couple forms of either a variance, and there's a few different kinds of variances, or a special exception. And I think we have all just those kinds of cases before us tonight. So, yeah. So what we do is we invite the applicant to come forward. And actually, the first part of each case, there's a public hearing, and that's part of the script first, and then I'll go into the other, the second half of how the case works. So we ask the applicant to come up and state their name and address for the record. They have up to 15 minutes to present their case, basically explaining what you're trying to do, and how you need the, the points of law that are necessary to have this Board be able to approve your request. Then we will seek to see if there's any other testimony from anybody else that might be in favor of the application. And each of those individuals will have up to five minutes for providing their testimony. After that, we'll see if there's anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding a case. Everybody there will have up to five minutes for that. If there is any of that kind of, again, opposition, questions, concerns, then the applicant will have a chance to come back for rebuttal of those items that were brought, brought up by, by anybody that had the concerns. And then one and only one of those that spoke against or with concerns will be able to come up as a final rebuttal. And if we have that situation, we'll give you a chance to basically kind of talk amongst yourselves as far as if there's, you know, you have to just basically select one person. I don't know if I have that situation tonight or not. It does sometimes happen, depending on the nature of the case. So we get through all that part of things, and the Board, and they kind of alluded to this, but the Board will potentially ask questions during any of those parts of the testimony. Also, kind of in those regards, all the, all the testimony, anything that's going to be part of the record, needs to be into a microphone. You see, we all have microphones here at the tables. We have the microphone at the podium. So the meeting is recorded, both audio-wise and video-wise. It does replay on the, the Nashua City Government Channel. And the recordings do also, are available on the city website. We also ultimately do have a written record of the minutes for every meeting as well. But it is important that we get your name and address, so that that gets accurately reflected in the, in the minutes. So after we've gotten all that testimony, that closes the public hearing, and we open the public meeting. That's where we basically start to discuss amongst ourselves, any thoughts, concerns, whatever we have about the case. And then usually, then we get to some point where we're ready for somebody to make a motion. The Board will basically always act on a case. We almost always just end up making a decision of either approval or denial. Sometimes cases do get tabled for various reasons. And, but if we have that situation, it'll be pretty clear what's happening. But generally, we will end up, somebody will make a motion, and then we'll go through the vote, and try to close out the case. Usually try to do this reminder after every case, there is a 30-day window, window of appeal. So if the decision was not, if you will, to your liking, or you've, but basically, ultimately, you can ask for a rehearing request. Note, though, that there is some criteria that has to be met as part of that, and we basically judge rehearing requests based on that. But especially if you think the Board made some illegal decision, or didn't consider all the information, or things like that, that might be sufficient, well, should be sufficient for the Board to then, if we believe that was the case based on the request that we get, then we will grant a rehearing, and then it'll get rescheduled. But, so typically, once this Board makes its decision, especially if it's an approval, you're free to move forward with your case. Sometimes the planning Board is the next part of that. Most of the time, there's a building permit of some sort that's involved, but you can pretty much start right away. But Mr. Durfee and staff in the Planning Department can guide you through any questions or concerns you have kind of after tonight, as to where you stand in the process, or if you're not quite sure what you can do or how to proceed. So I'll also note that, as I noted about taking the, you know, kind of the recordings, the acoustics, especially sound coming from the audience carries really well up to the stage here. So if you need or want to have any conversations, we ask that you just basically step outside into the hall and have those out there, and otherwise, it's, it can be quite disruptive. I'll come back to noting, basically, I alluded to this also, generally, in primary cases, we type the cases we hear are variances and special exceptions. Basically, a special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits, only under special circumstances. And there's five points of law that are associated with special exceptions. If those are met, then we summarize, summarize that information in the Board motion and grant the request. If we feel those aren't met, then obviously, we will end up denying the special exception. A variance is actually a request that seeks to have something done that's not directly allowed by code. And, but, and there's different, there's five criteria also for that to be met, but there are different criteria than the special exception. Generally, you might think of the special exception as a little bit lower bar to clear than a variance, just because, again, the special exceptions are essentially written in the code, if certain things are met in that, in that consideration. Whereas a variance requires more consideration that the scope of the land use code and the law as written pertaining to that situation does not fully comprehend the nuances of the special conditions, oftentimes of the property, or the reasonable benefit that's, that's can be achieved by the owner versus harm, considerations for the effects on surrounding property values, et cetera. So there's, there's, those are some of the criteria that you should already be somewhat familiar because of doing applications and going through this, but that's what we will basically look to see if that has been met. I think I've pretty much covered everything. Oh, Mr. Durfee, any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes.
Okay. I think, are there copies there on the front table?
Yes.
If anybody does want a copy of the agenda to follow along, they are there at the front table. But we, and are there any just general procedural questions from the audience? Otherwise, I think we're ready to start. I will go ahead and-
Mr. Chair, the agenda is also on the city website, for anyone with smartphone.
Like cellphone, just pull it up that way. Thank you. Good point. Otherwise, I'll read the first case into the record, and whoever is presenting that case, you're welcome to start your way up to the podium meanwhile. The owner is Crescent Properties Realty Trust, Anton, Charles A. Anton, and Arthur C. Junior T. S. And the applicant is Justin Parker. The address is 493 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 166. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-108, Section C, Subsection 2, to increase the allowable wall sign square footage from 87 square feet to 130 square feet, to add a second sign located on the side of the business. This is in the HB Zone, Ward 2. Welcome, and again, if you say your name and address for the record.
Hello. I am Justin Parker from Classic Signs, and that address is 13 Columbia Drive, Amherst, New Hampshire.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
If that microphone would be, you can raise it up, or you can also take it off of the stand as well.
Okay. All right. So we are proposing a increase to the allowable square footage to 130 square feet to allow for this non-illuminated wall sign on the side of the building. The allowable square footage, as it is now, is calculated by the frontage of the building, and that currently puts us at 87 allowed square feet. This property is a corner unit on this, which means it has frontage on both Amherst Street and Thornton Street. The previous tenant also had a sign there before, in around the same location that we're wanting to put ours, about the same size. Let's go over the five points of law. Granting will not be contrary to public interest. Granting this variance will allow advertising on all of the streets that this building, or this business fronts. And it would also allow the, around the previous use case to be restored, that being the sign on the front and the side. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. It will allow advertising on both streets, of which there's equal frontage. There's actually two feet more of frontage on Thornton Road instead of Amherst Street. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting this variance. Granting this variance will allow signage on all the areas that the previous tenant had signed on. Number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties. As I said before, the previous tenant had signs in all these locations. We're not going to be taking advertising space away from anyone, just using the advertising space that is on the unit. And the special conditions that exist for this unit, such that the literal enforcement would result in unnecessary hardship. This unit is on the corner, which means that it is different from the rest of the units in the, in that complex. And since we have about equal frontage on both streets, and only one street frontage is allowed in the calculation, I think that is grounds to increase the square footage for this specific case.
All right. Let me see if the Board has questions for you? Anybody have any questions? Mr. Sylvia?
Okay. There's, there's a large sign with all the businesses on Amherst Street, correct? Is, there's not one on Thornton Road, is there?
Uh, no, it's not on Thornton Road.
So this, this would help people going on Thornton Road find the business?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just, do you have, I guess I'm just kind of curious about the history then, as far as the, as far as was the other previous tenant, when they had the second sign, was it an overall similar square footage? And did they just never have the actual permission for that sign? Or was there a long transition between signs? I'm just wondering what the history there is.
Um, I'm not sure about the, I'm not sure about the, the bureaucracy of the previous tenant, whether they pulled the permit for the side or not, but I do have the, I do have a view of the previous tenant, if you'd like to pass it around.
Sure, you could just bring it up to Mr. Patrick. Thank you. You're okay if we keep that, because we need, anything we take, we gotta keep.
Yes, sir. Do you guys have the proposed view of what we're trying for?
I think we have one that's, that is the Thornton Road, it's by-
Yep. Yep, it's a two.
Thank you. Do you think maybe we're set for questions? All right, you can have a seat, and we'll see if there's any other testimony, and go somewhere.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the sign request at 493 Amherst Street? Seeing none, is there anybody here with questions, concerns, or opposition to the sign request at 493 Amherst Street? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody have any first thoughts or comments? Mr. Sylvia?
I think it's a fair request. The property, the building itself is a little bit, it's far back from Amherst Street as well as Thornton Road, so it would be helpful to have additional signage to help people find it.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm, I'm in favor of their question. The, the previous sign is similar in size, and there are, there's no other signage on Thornton Road to help people find the property.
So I'm also in favor. It is interesting that that building is set back so far. You really can't see the side of that building from Amherst Street. I, I really didn't get a good view of it until I was sitting in the, coming out of the parking lot of NCC. So I do believe that any advertising they can do on the side of the building that keeps folks off of Amherst Street is, due to the amount of traffic, is good for all of us. We've certainly talked about signage in the past of other businesses on Amherst Street, with safety being a big factor, anything we can do to keep people flowing in the right direction, improve safety. So I am in favor for those reasons.
All right, thank you. If there's no other discussion, would you like to offer a motion? Mr. McCarr, for it.
All right, I'll go first. All right, let me make a motion that the application of Crescent Properties Realty Trust, Anton, Charles, and A. Arthur, Jr., T. S. owner, Justin Parker, applicant for 493 Amherst Street, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-108 C2, to increase allowable wall sign square footage from 87 square feet to 130 square feet, to add a second sign located on the side of the business, which would be on the Thornton roadside, be approved. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because the purpose of the sign ordinance is to allow businesses to identify their businesses and their services. And by having the additional sign on Thornton Road, that would be enhanced. With, having the additional sign on Thornton Road's sign would also enhance the public interest in that it would allow people to find it from Thornton Road's side, reducing congestion and confusion. And we find that it would be within the spirit of the ordinance for the same reasons. We also find that granting the variance would do substantial justice, because there is really little to no benefit, if any, to the public for not allowing the sign on the Thornton roadside, where it is a substantial benefit to the business. We have no evidence that the values of surrounding properties would be diminished. And we do find that unnecessary hardship exists owing to special conditions of the property, distinguish it from other properties in the area, where denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because things that we noted were, of course, the fact that the property is on the corner, and the building is set fairly far back from both roads, thereby necessitating additional signage. And there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific application to this property for those same reasons, and we find that it is a reasonable use.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
One second.
Mr. Lionel, second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That passes unanimously, 5-0. So a 30-day window of appeal, but certainly you can move forward. Seems unlikely there'll be any, any follow-up, but always possible. Thank you. That'll take us to case number two. The owner is Hanger Mill Apartments LLC. The applicant is Jason Perillo. The address is 110 East Hollis Street, Sheet 39, Lot 01. The request is for variances from Land Use Code Sections S1, 190-93J, number one, to allow five banner-type signs as permitted signs. Number two, 190-108D, Subsection 2, to allow four signs, where three are permitted. Number three, Section 190-104, Table 104-11E, to allow a 66-square-foot projecting sign, where 24 square feet is permitted. And number four, Section 190-108C5, to allow a total of 454.11 square feet. This is in the GI/TOD Zone, Ward 7. Welcome, and it's name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Jason Perillo. I'm with Pro Sign Service, 110 Forge River Parkway in Rainham, Massachusetts. So we're here tonight to ask for relief from the zoning ordinance to allow five banners for the Hanger Mill Apartments building. This is a very large building with multiple vehicular approaches, and the challenge here is to identify the building and help new and potential renters find the building without compromising the architecture of this historical building. So these are, these are banners, although they are not temporary banners, these are, these are durably constructed banners that have welded edges and seams. They have pole pockets. The, the projecting sign has a, has a pole, has pole pockets, so that it's very durable as far as when. These are meant to last. They're, they're made of a very thick material, so these are not your typical temporary banner So as far as the meeting, the variance criteria, as far as question number one, granting the requested variance will not be contrary to public interest, because the proposed five banners for the Hanger Mill Apartments are designed to complement the building's architecture while providing sufficient visibility to the public for, for new and potential residents. The signage will be mounted to the building, therefore, therefore not interfering with a public way as far as sightlines. Number two, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance, because the banners are designed to be appropriately sized to identify the building without detracting from the building's architecture or, or adding unnecessary clutter. Number three, substantial justice will be done to the property owner by granting this variance, because the signs presented would benefit the, the property owner by allowing them to inform the public of the building's transformation and the new housing it provides. With a shortage of housing in the area, it will be a benefit to the community to, to make the public aware that this new housing options are presented by this property. And obviously, also to, these banners will provide visibility to, for the public from multiple vehicular approaches. Number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties, because the apartment, the apartment building has transformed a historical site into a unique place to live with modern comfort. These banners will benefit the community by clearly identifying the property and informing the public of the new housing units available for rent. The proposed signs would not be a detriment to the, to the neighborhood, as they are non-illuminated, and to scale with the building and the visual paths in regard to readability from the various approaches. And then finally, number five, the special conditions exist such that a little enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship, because it is essential that this apartment building be clearly identified. The neighborhood is thickly settled, and the building has multiple approaches. The banners, banner located at the top of the building fits the architecture of the building, and will not, will provide sightline visibility from Temple Street. The double-sided vertical banner mounted to the left side of the building will be visible from East Hollis and Aldis Streets. And then the two vertical banners mounted to the right side of the building will be visible from the intersection of Hollis and Temple Streets. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Lionel?
One of the, or a couple of the signs that are shown in the packet talk about now leasing, which to me implies that this is, these signs would not be permanent, but they, they might be swapped out for something else later.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, the, once, once they, you know, once, you know, the building has a sufficient level of occupancy, they may want to change the, the wording on the banners, but it would, the size wouldn't change from what we're replying for here, unless the Board sees fit. But they would still be, these banners would still be used to identify the building as the Hanger Mill Apartments. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah. In regard to the spirit of the ordinance, as you work at a sign company, I'm sure you see a lot of similar projects like this around the area. Could you tell us a little bit more about those and how those are similar to this?
Well, I mean, I think this is actually a kind of a unique one, because, you know, a lot of times when you're dealing with like a new building, you know, the, the building's designed to have a, a space for a sign, you know, a canopy or a, a sign band. This is different, because this is a unique historical site building, and we don't want to interfere with the architecture of the buildings. That's why we, we came up with this, this, this design, so that the, they're appropriately placed in places on the building that aren't going to clutter the building or affect the architecture. And so, you know, like I said, it's a very large building, you know, the, there's a couple of signs on the left side, which is really just meant to identify for, for cars coming, traveling east on Hollis. Then you have the signs on the right side, which are meant to be visible at the intersection. Then there's the sign on the top, which is on the other side, basically facing Temple Street.
Okay. I feel, I, I may be mistaken, but I feel there's signs like this at Clock Tower, and also some other mill buildings in the Merrimack Valley.
Okay.
That's what I was getting at. It's like, it's not a, you, it's a unique situation in regard to other properties, but you're not reinventing the wheel here.
Sure.
So this is, this is within what is expected.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, to point out that there actually is a precedent in Nashua, the lofts on Franklin Street.
Yeah, I was trying to think of which one it was.
Yeah, and that, they, they also have banners that, where they had applied initially for a large illuminated sign on the top of the building, and we did not like that. And they went with the hanging banners instead. So this is a similar approach to what we approved there.
The, on the Temple Street side?
Sure.
Uh, there's one, one large sign at the top of, I guess that's a stairwell. Does that also, is that going to be permanently saying, because I think it says something about leasing as well? Is that permanently staying there as well, or is that going to get switched out?
Yeah, the idea is to permanently allow this sign banner to be there, but like I said, down the road, there might be a change in the, the language on, on the banner, but it will definitely always say Hanger Mill Apartments.
I wanted to check, none of these signs are illuminated?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, I think we're all set. You can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
See if there's any other questions. Is there anybody present that would like to speak in favor of the sign request for 110 East Hollis Street? Seeing none, is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding the sign request at 110 East Hollis Street? I didn't see none. I'll close, close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Any initial, Mr. Neely?
So I'm in favor of this application. Uh, this is a very fascinating old building. For those who've been around a while, you remember that the signage was tiny, that the Henry Hangar, I mean, it was tiny. So it is, as Mr. Sylvia was trying to pull out over there, it is pretty common to see this type of signage for this size building for residential. As Mr. Lionel was talking about, we've got, we've got a similar- As Mr. Ryanell was talking about, we've got a similar thing on Franklin Street. Quite frankly, because this is on a corner, a three-sided corner, they've got to have the signage on three of those sides. I think what they have proposed on the East Hollis side is actually perfect. If you think about the folks driving by there, nobody's going by at 25 miles an hour. They're all going very quickly. So, to have a couple of signs in there is a good catch, especially if somebody's coming to visit folks here for the first time. You come up in that building pretty quick if you're coming from the main street side, so you have time to make that turn on the Temple Street. So, for safety reasons and the fact that this is a common practice, I'm in favor of the number of signs and the amount of square footage.
Thank you. Mr. McCallum.
I would agree, and I would just add that it's also challenging to put signage on the building. I think the banners make sense just because of how the building is tall, large, and very close to the road. So, it's kind of difficult to think of how could you position signage to get your message across, although I think this is a good resolution.
I'll also add, kind of to that point, I think it's probably ultimately more visually appealing versus like some sorts of ground signs that there could have been a proposal for, or things like that, that probably wouldn't be as sensible for multiple reasons. So, I think this is a reasonable approach, for sure. Seems like maybe there might be done feedback. Would anybody like to offer a motion? Mr. Ryanell, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Hanger Apartments LLC owner, Jason Perillo applicant, 110 East Hollis Street, Sheet 39, Lot 1, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Sections, 190-93J1, to allow five banner-type signs as permitted signs. Second, Section 190-108E2, to allow four signs where three are permitted. Third, Section 190-104, Table 104-11E, to allow a 66-foot, square-foot projecting sign where 24 square feet is permitted. And fourth, Section 190-108C5, to allow a total of 454.11 square feet, and this is in the GI/ TOD Zone in Ward 7. The board finds that granting the variance would be in the, would be in the public interest to allow identification of this large and historic building with, which is sided by three streets, and that would make it much easier to locate, especially given the amount of traffic that goes by. We believe the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because this allows for identification of this new facility. The building is old, but the fact that there's apartments there is not, and it does it in the least intrusive method that we can think of. The granting the variance would do substantial justice because it allows the applicant to promote their property in a visually appealing way that's not distracting to the surrounding area. We have no evidence that values of surrounding properties would be diminished. In fact, we believe the fact that there is a residential property there would increase the value of surrounding properties. Special conditions of the property that distinguish from other properties, it's a large and historic building, sided on three streets, and therefore there is, the proposed use is a reasonable one because of the reasons I specified earlier. Let's see. What else? Is that, hm? That's it, okay. So, for all of those reasons, I make a motion to approve these four variances.
Thank you, and seconded by Mr. Neely. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Similar guidance as the previous case, it looks like it should be good to go forward with your signage. All right. Case number... The owner is Holly Sand Colby. The address is 6B Fox Street, Sheet 61, Lot 68. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-119A4, to expand a non-conforming use to construct an attached 17' x 22' bedroom to Unit B. This is in the GI Zone, Ward 4. Welcome, and name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Holly Sand, and it's 6B Fox Street.
Tell us what you're trying to do.
Yeah, so we live on a residential street, it's just purely residential, and all we're trying to do is put on an additional bedroom for our son, who's outgrown the tiny room that he's in right now. And essentially, that's all we're trying to do. It's going to be 17' x 22', about 370 square feet, and it will have a little farmer's porch on the front.
I think, just to help you out here, I think the key thing is that, and you kind of alluded to it in your introduction, for a residential street, but you're actually zoned into the GI Zone.
Yes.
Which makes this a non-conforming use, and you're just furthering that non-conforming use, but you're doing something that would be very typical in a regular residential zone.
Yes, and apparently my zone is supposed to be changed with the rezoning that's happening. So, they already addressed that it will be moved to a residential.
Meanwhile, you're caught in this.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Okay. I think it's pretty straightforward to see if the board has any questions. No, I think, oh, Mr. Sylvia.
Yep, and you mentioned that the rest of the street is residential. Are the other houses on the street also similar in size to what you're proposing?
Yes, yeah. All right, thank you for making that easy.
I think it was harder to find the auditorium. Okay, is there anybody present in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the request at Fox Street for the addition? Seeing none, is there anybody here with questions, concerns, or opposition to this request at Fox Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Mr. Bushett.
I'm in favor of the application. Again, because it's in the GI Zone, it's one of the reasons why we're here. And going further from that, just looking at the house, the property, it is a larger lot, so the scale is not overwhelming for the property. And again, the addition and the farmer's porch pretty much would keep the same line as the two Units A and B. So, it's not, you know, it's not protruding, it's not adding any burden to the public. So, again, I don't think any values will be diminished. I think values would increase, if anything. And so, with that, I'm going to support the application.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I think this is a creative way, I'm in favor of this. I think this is a creative way to add some space while staying in the same footprint. We had a similar case probably two months ago, right off Amherst Street, where they were just trying to increase and were able to stay in that same footprint. So, I really think this is creative. This is just one of those streets I've never been on, so it was really cool to get in there and see that it exists, and I do feel bad you're stuck in that zoning netherlands there, but I'm fully in support of this.
All right, thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion? Thank you.
There's so much paperwork now. I have to deal with stuff here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Holly Sand Colby owner, 6B Fox Street, Sheet 61, Lot 68, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-119, Subsection A, Subsection 4, to expand a non-conforming use to construction and attached 17' x 22' bedroom to Unit B. This is in the GI Zone, Ward 4. The requested use is listed as a special exception in the use matrix. The requested use will not create undue traffic ingestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We do not expect any additional vehicle traffic from this special exception, and it definitely will not unduly impair the pedestrian safety on the sidewalk as they are just increasing the size of their own home. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system in such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare as discussed by the applicant. This is just to increase the size of the bedrooms, they're not adding any additional people, so certainly will not affect any of the public water drainage or sewage. Any special regulations for the use set forth in this article are fulfilled, which is really not applicable, and the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. We do not have any other neighbors who testified against this. As we talked about, this is a good creative way to add on to the square footage of the house without going outside of the footprint of the house, so there is no reason to think this will negatively impact the neighborhood.
Thank you, and seconded by Mr. McCallum. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Same guidance applies, seems unlikely there'll be any concern. So, you are welcome to move forward with our building permits, most likely the next step. So, good luck with your project.
One question, is there a subject to backside? What should we do?
You could just leave it, you could actually just leave it there, and we've collected after the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leave it over here, Steve. Hold yourself.
Yeah, I was going to suggest over there, but that's a good point. Thank you. All right, move to case number four. It's Tees Family Revocable Trust, the owner, the address is 3 Swart Street, Sheet 48, Lot 59. The request is for a use variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Use Number 1, to allow an accessory structure as a principal use on a lot where no principal structure exists. And secondly, a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-16E, Subsection 3, for a minor encroachment of less than four feet into the side yard setback. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 3. Somebody here to present? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Frank Tees, 93 Concord Street, trustee of the Tees Family Trust. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Here today to request a special exception and the variance on the subject property. My family has been in this community for many decades, and I personally have lived on Concord Street the last 15 years, and then at 93 Concord Street for the last 10. The subject property at 3 Swart is pretty special to the community, was built by the Thurber family back in 1930, and Thurber family ran a bank in town and later bought by the Gitterman family, so only two occupants there. And upon Mrs. Gitterman's passing in August of 2023, my wife and I decided to buy the property with the sole intent to really save that land. If you know the corner, it's right on the corner of Swart and Concord Street, across from what I would know growing up as the Crisp and Robuski Homes and kind of diagonal to Greeley Park. It's our intent to maintain, as you see in the drawing here, this is open space. The way we're drawing it is to just create kind of a square lot for the home. We've had several people interested in buying said home, so today we're asking for permission to maintain that structure as a principal structure on the property of the resultant lot that would be used for our family. Whether or not we merge that into our current lot at 93 Concord Street remains to be seen. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Ryanell.
Yeah, I guess I was a little bit confused as to why, why you're here at all, given that you're not intending on, you've said that you're currently intending on developing that property. Why do the subdivision?
Just to sell the house, to be in a position if I needed to sell the house, right? So, I'm selling, I'm selling the home, I'm going to keep the land.
And that garage would not go with the house?
Correct.
Does the, I looked at the house, and I didn't look carefully to see whether it had a garage of its own or a drive, I mean, obviously it has a driveway, but...
It has a driveway, does not have a garage outside of that existing.
I see. So, if you were to sell that home, that would not include use of the current garage building?
Correct, and we're provisioning for, during the subdivision process, for enough space for a garage to be built, pending, you know, proper approvals down the road.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks for the question.
Mr. McCallum, did you still have?
My question was similar, but I was just going to ask why? Why not keep the garage with the house?
I want to keep as much green space as possible, and it's just, working with Tanner Swanson, they asked the same question. I said, no, I want to, I want to keep it on my property, and here's, you know, about .43, I think, acres for the house.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I think we're all set.
Great, thank you.
Is there anybody present who would like to speak in favor of the variance and special exception requests for the 3 Swart Street property? Seeing none, is there anybody present that has questions, concerns, or opposition regarding? Welcome, and state your name and address for the record.
Well, do, Ashley Purple. I live at 130 Nutting Hill, Mason, New Hampshire, but my mother over there, Karen Purple, lives at 58 Berkeley Street, so we are directly behind. I guess our only question here is, with that division, it actually is affecting our property line as well, which one would include, it's not a straight through to just the Concord Street and Swart, it actually has it going all the way to Berkeley Street. So, I guess our question is that division. We were here a few years ago with Judy Gitterman, asking to subdivide this property, and she was denied. So, I guess we're just trying to figure out, what are we doing to make sure we preserve that historic North Nashua, as my mother still resides there, and we have been there for quite a few years? So, just some questions, just trying to figure out exactly what's going on. It does have on here that there is no plan of what to do with that property, just to keep it as green space, so I guess that question is, is the plan to sell Judy Gitterman's old property, is this the house? It seems like where that cut is will also take away part of that driveway because it is a U driveway, and it takes away that garage. Does that mean that a new garage will need to be built? And where would it be built if part of the new variance cuts through to Berkeley Street? That's pretty much our questions.
So, we'll let the applicant respond. Hang on one, I want to first make sure there's no questions from the board for you.
I'm doing that.
And some, just also, some of what you're asking about will only get taken care of if the applicant moves to go to the planning board for a subdivision. We don't actually take care of the subdivision part of things.
Gotcha.
But a lot of times, we have to take care of something like the variance for the applicant to be able to go to the planning board.
Absolutely.
So, some of your concerns are much more planning board-based, but we'll also, you know, the applicant will have a chance to respond as well.
Perfect.
All right, and I don't think the board has any questions, I think you're set in that regard.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding the application for Swart Street? Seeing none, Mr. Tees, welcome to respond, and...
Hi, neighbor. Lived there for 10 years, never met you.
I now know where the town is, but...
Really, happy to chat anytime. Thank you for addressing the fact that, you know, a lot of those are more planning questions, but our intent truly, I mean, my wife wants to create a place so my dog can go hang out. I don't know how much money we're going to spend in doing that, but we're going to make it green space, nice space that our family can enjoy. With respect to impacting their lot, yes, whether the present lot line for the Gitterman property, or I guess it's my property now, so, does run across theirs. We staked that out, you saw that, right? And, but we have no plan for development. For clarification, although I think this is more of a planning item, Mrs. Gitterman, in the past, had asked to build three houses, I think it was, in the past. So, there's no plan. I was told for planning purposes, we did have to put a house on the plan, which we did, and I said, I don't really want that, but just to prove the planning that house can sit. There it is.
And I think the other question that got asked is, and this again is probably more planned, but...
Sure.
...the garage were to be placed now in the 93 Concord Street property as part of the plan, where would that garage be located? I don't know if that's been figured out.
So, if a garage were to be built on the house that was... So, the idea would be that would face Swart, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't come back into, towards your property, it'd be up and even with the house and facing Swart. But I won't own it to do that, so it'll be somebody else's hurdle.
You will actually have an opportunity... You, you will actually have an opportunity to come up again if you wish.
Make sure the board doesn't have any questions for you.
I just, I just wanna clarify, so the, the two buildings that are there, the barn or the garage and the whatever, those are not gonna get knocked down, right? Those are, those are staying up for you to do whatever you wanna do with them?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't guarantee that they'll never get knocked down.
But not now, right.
As long as I'm alive, they're probably gonna stay there forever. Even the woodshed, it's, I mean, I don't know, I like collecting old things. I haven't even opened it up, but the garage right now, we have some of our property in there as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I'm assuming otherwise, you, you know, to that, also to answer, to answer that question, I don't think you'd be asking for the variance regarding the accessory structures. If you were planning to take them down, you wouldn't need that variance for that lot. Thank you, I think we're set. Are you, do you wanna come back up? You don't have to.
It might be more of a planning board then question, because it's just more of the driveway section.
Hang on, if you, sorry, if you just.
Yeah, I can speak loud, sure.
It still needs to be in the microphone though, so. And name and address again, sorry.
Ashley Purple, 130 Nutting Hill, Mason, New Hampshire, 4 Karen Purple, 58 Berkeley Street. So the question is more, I think it's just the driveway, right? Because that driveway, I'm not sure how many are so used to that property, but it does have a, a U shape that goes to that garage. So the idea is, I'm assuming the, the driveway would have to be split up because part of that driveway would still have to stay with the house. So it's just more of the understanding of that, that one little sliver, I guess, that goes against 58 Berkeley Street. What does that look like? What is the, the point of that variance to do with that green space? Just to make sure, I mean, we're assuming somebody will buy this house, it's a gorgeous house, just making sure those logistics are taken care of and if that's part of the variance or part of the planning board.
Yeah, I think you're right, it is more of a planning, more question, because it'll be part of the site plan and that part of things, so, yeah. I think there's probably nothing else then. Thank you. That closes the public hearing and I welcome the public meeting. Any initial thoughts, comments, Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, when I first saw this, I, I was skeptical because it was, as I asked my question, Mr. Tees, I said, you know, why are you doing this? And, but he gave me a really good answer that I, I like to hear, so I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So, so I'm also in favor of the application. You know, when you, when you look at this neighborhood, head back into Swart, Swart Terrace, Berkeley, there is a history of some larger houses back there, there's some green space the further you go back there. Anything we can do to, to conserve the green space, I'm, I'm a huge fan of, especially as you head towards Greeley Park there. I do believe the applicant adequately answered all our questions. You know, they wanna have that extra, extra garage for, for play toys and that type of stuff. I'm jealous, I would like to do the same thing. So that being said, there's really no reason in my mind to deny the application.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, I was wondering also why they, the applicant didn't wait until further down the line when they wanted to do a subdivision, but it sounds like the applicant's not sure if they're gonna go that route yet, so that answered my question.
Any other commentary? Somebody like to make a motion? Mr. McCarroll, thank you.
Looking to make a motion that the application of the Tees Family Revocable Trust, 3 Swart Street, are requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Use 1, to allow an accessory structure as a principal use on a lot where no principal structure exists. And two, a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16E3 for a minor encroachment of less than four feet into the side yard setback. It's in the RA Zone, Ward 3. So I'll, I'll start with the variance. Granting the variance, or I should say, we find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. At this point, it is an existing building, it's simply changing from one lot to another lot. So there is no impact to public health or safety. It's certainly consistent with the character of the neighborhood, again, it's, it's an existing garage. And it is within the spirit of the ordinance for the same reasons, and of course, it doesn't conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. We find that granting the variance would result in substantial justice because there's really no benefit to the public or no harm to the public and a significant benefit to the owner in being able to use this, continue to use this garage. And we find that there would be no diminution of the surrounding property values. We saw no evidence presented to that case. And we do find an unnecessary hardship exists because only taking special conditions of the property distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial would result in unnecessary hardship because, so first of all, really it's, it's the overall size of the lot is substantial. It's going to become two lots, and again, there's just no change to what's happening on the ground. The existing garage is merely shifting. For those reasons, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific application to this property. And the proposed use variance we find is a reasonable one. Again, it's an existing garage that would continue to be used as a garage for storage, so there are no conditions on the ground. So for those reasons, motion to approve.
Thank you. It's her second. Mr. Lionel, thank you. Any discussion on the variance motion to approve? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. You're welcome to continue for the special exception.
Move on to Part B for the special exception. I think I have the rate sheet, did I do? Let's check. So I'd like to, well, I'd already made the motion, I guess, but I'll read it again. I put both in one. I'd like to make a motion that the application of the Tees Family Revocable Trust, 3 Swart Street, Lot 59, for a special exception to encroach, for a minor encroachment of less than four feet into the side yard setback, be approved. We find that the use is a use listed in the list of permitted uses. The requested use would not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Again, it's an existing garage, there is no change. The requested use would not overload any public water, drainage, sewer system, or any other municipal system, et cetera. There would be no hazards affecting public health, safety, or welfare, once again, existing garage. We find that there really are no special use regulations for this particular use, so that criterion is met. And the requested variance would not impair the integrity or be out of character of the district or the immediate neighborhood within which it's located, et cetera. And once again, it's an existing garage, there is no change. So with those reasons, motion to approve.
Motion, second by Mr. Lionel, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. You're welcome to proceed. If you have questions, you can contact with the Cherokee or the planning department. There's always a chance of a rehearing request, doesn't seem likely at this point, but good luck with your project. All right. That will move us on to case number five. The owner is Robert A. McIntosh Jr. The address is 15 New Street, Sheet 28, Lot 15. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16 to allow four total townhouse units in a proposed new lot with 17,408 square feet, where 24,891 square feet is required. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 7. Welcome. You certainly know the drill.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do. Andy Perelman, attorney with Prunian and Perelman, here in Nashua. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bob McIntosh, seeking a variance to allow the additional four proposed units. With me tonight is Bob McIntosh, the property owner. Directly behind me is Ethan Beals from Hainer Swanson, IMEG. And I have a presentation for you, I have a handout for the board. And I'm gonna tell you how we got here, you know, the area, issues with the neighborhood, and then the criteria for the variance, if I could, please. Mr. Chairman, you have our application. We have an oversized lot that Bob McIntosh bought in 1999. We are proposing a subdivision of one lot into two to maintain the existing house lot of 15 New Street on what we call Lot 15A and the proposed four-unit townhouse condominium on proposed Lot 15B. In the RB District, the RB District allows seven units per acre. And 15 New Street is 30,029 square feet. And if we were to try and put five lots, excuse me, five units onto the existing 15 New Street, we would need 31,115 square feet. We would be 1,800, 1,086 square feet short, just shy of allowing five units on the existing 15 New Street. And so what we're proposing is to subdivide to pretty much right down the middle and to keep the existing house as one existing house and the four units on 15B. Now that changes the arithmetic of the density calculations, but when you look at the overall site, we, we're just shy of, of having the five units on 15B, but Bob McIntosh wanted to keep his house. And so we were having the subdivision, which makes the request that's before you tonight under the density calculation of the, of our dimensional table. We, we considered, when we were looking at this thing, Ethan and I, we considered just having a five-unit condo and asking for a variance for just that thousand square feet. But it didn't make sense because we have a house built in the 1930s and then we would have brand-new units, you know, built in 2025. And putting those two together in one condo is tricky, it doesn't make sense. They, they wouldn't aesthetically be the same. So we thought the better approach would be to divide the, divide the lot and have a standalone four-unit condo and then have the house on its own. Another thought that we had was that if you do the calculation, if you do the math, we could, we could get three units onto Lot 15B by right. We, we could create on the lot such that each lot would have the enough square footage. The lot to make that happen for the townhouse lot would be an awkward-shaped lot. It would have, it would kinda cut through the existing driveway on 15 New. It would kinda sneak behind the swimming pool, so you have a, just an odd-shaped lot just to, just for the sake of getting the square footage. So we could make it happen. We could get three, three units on the, onto the 15B by right. We could meet all the dimensional requirements, but it would be an unusual lot. We'd prefer to keep the rectangular lot for, for the house and have a rectangular lot for the, for the 14, excuse me, for the four units being proposed. Can't see. We have a, we, oh, another, okay. With respect to the design, and perhaps Ethan can speak to this a little bit more, but we initially had the, we initially had the units facing New Street so that the front doors of the driveways would all be facing New Street, facing that, that kinda cut off that old, that's really an old railroad line, that kinda creates that diagonal. But we didn't, we didn't think that would be respectful to neighbors, we didn't think that would work. So what we did is we turned the four units such that you see them today. So the four units looking out to the back, they will look at the, they look at the side of one of the Marshall Street buildings and you can see that on my, on my, on my, one of the first plan that I gave you from the GIS, the 2022 overview. So our units would be looking at the side of one of the Marshall Street buildings. And likewise, the home at 14 Mulvanity, we'd be looking at the side of the new condominium units. They wouldn't be looking at the, at the back decks, they wouldn't be looking into the homes or the kitchens. They really just, the 14 Mulvanity would be looking at our, the side of the, side of the, our units. Likewise, we would be looking at the side of the, of that big building on the, on the Marshall Street Apartments. So that's how we, that's why we came up with the design, we think it works, the design itself. These are compact units, these are 18 feet wide units, 32 feet deep, times four. Three-story units, garage under, living on the, for the second floor, I guess. And then bedrooms, two bedrooms on the, on the third floor, slab on granite, slab on grade, rather. And so that's kinda how we got there, that's, that's why the, how our math worked out and how we laid out the, the new lot that's being proposed. And if you look at, I have a couple things that packet that I hand out. My first page that I provided, again, this is from the city's GIS map. This is the 2022 aerial, and just to give you an overview of the whole neighborhood. And you can see what I just mentioned, if you can picture the four units as laid out in the plan, they would be looking toward the side of that Marshall Street Apartment Building and toward the back of the Southern Hampshire Services Building, that large building. And the 15 New Street existing, they would have their own standalone, standalone lot. My next page that I provided to you, I have a number of lots marked, encircled in blue. And each of those lots represent a multifamily home in this neighborhood. This is an established neighborhood in Nashua, and it's a mix of single-family homes. And each of the lots that I have outlined in blue is a multifamily home, anywhere from a lot of two units, some three units. There are four, five, six, and seven units scattered throughout. But you can see this area is really a healthy mix. And I could have kept going, I stopped at Ald Street, but if you go across Ald Street, you can see that there are a number of multifamily units in the area. My next picture that I provide for you is, just looking down New Street, on your, on the right-hand side of this picture is the 15 New Street home that Bob McIntosh lives in. This is the dead end of New Street. And you can see, that's really what the neighborhood is looking at every day, is they come to New Street, the big Marshall Street Apartments, and I'm not sure how many, well over 100 apartments in total. Each unit has, I don't know, 40, each building roughly has 40-some-odd units. And then finally, I received this letter today from RE/MAX Innovative. And the, you can read it, the letter speaks for itself. But it's our, it's our evidence for you folks to say that we had a Realtor take a look at this and does not believe that there'd be any impact on property values. And finally, before I get to the criteria, I know some neighbors are out here tonight. We don't see that there's gonna be much of an impact. Four additional units are not gonna create a lot of traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've been around enough traffic studies and enough traffic engineers, so I know that the, the traffic count, the trip generation is gonna be nominal. Maybe, maybe, a car is out in the morning, a car is in at night, maybe fewer than that. Typical, you know, FedEx services and whatnot, but it's really gonna be a nominal impact to the, to the neighborhood. And with that, Mr. Chairman, unless board had any questions, I just quickly address the criteria of the variance. You folks have our application. The print gets very small on these applications. We don't believe that there's gonna be any, anything contrary to the public interest because we're, we are proposing residential units in a resident, in a established residential neighborhood. We're not changing the character of the neighborhood. We have a multifamily proposal where there are many multifamily units in this New Street neighborhood. We don't see that we have any impact to the public health, safety, or welfare of the community. We are in the spirit of the ordinance because if the purpose of the density is not to overcrowd or overburden a neighborhood or, or an area, you know, we're doing that, again, we're, we're just shy of having five units for the overall lot. We could get three units, we're essentially asking for one extra unit. And we don't believe that doing that, and the way we have it laid out and the way we're trying to be respectful of, be respectful of our neighbors, violates the spirit of the ordinance. We have substantial justice, we have an oversized lot. If you look at my plan that had all the, that all the, all my blue boxes are on all the lots, you can see that Bob McIntosh is the biggest lot in the area with the exception of the Marshall Street lots. And so with that, we don't believe that there'd be any harm to the public where we have, we're requesting four units. We could get three, we're just shy of five with the overall lot. We don't think there's any harm to the public at the same time. It allows Bob McIntosh to use the full extent of his property, develop the property, provides housing stock to the city. We don't believe there's any impact to the neighboring property values. And you can see that we have that letter from RE/MAX Innovative. And finally, Mr. Chairman, members, respected the hardship. The density requirements are intended to prevent the overcrowding and overburdening residential lots. We have that here, we've intentionally designed this layout to minimize that impact. And because we're just shy of roughly 1,000 square feet, if you look at the overall picture, we believe that we have a reasonable proposed use, there's no fair and substantial reason to prohibit what's being proposed to the board. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. And likewise, I'd offer up Ethan Beals as well. And likewise, I'd offer up Ethan Beals as well.
Attorney Pearlman, when I went to look at that property, it appeared to me that the lot that wants to be subdivided was being used as a parking lot. Did I not see that correctly?
It's not, it's just extra cars and toys of Mr. McIntosh's. It's not, it's not a commercial parking lot by any means, it's just Bob's stuff.
I see. So he's going to have to find some other spot for him.
Bob owns Davis Freener Home. All right. And so there's not a lot of room at Davis Freener Home, but, you know, we will, we will find an alternate site for anything that he has.
Thank you.
Other questions on the board? Mr. McGarret.
So why four and not three?
Just to get the maximum benefit for the, for the owner, honestly, and adding housing stock to the city. And we could, we could do three, but we're so close to the calculation, we thought it would be a reasonable request.
I think we're all set then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the application at fifteen New Street? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the proposal at fifteen New Street?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Valcourt.
You can just hold on if you prefer.
I live at ten New Street in Nashua, so I would say about halfway down the street from where Bob's property is. I've owned my home for over fifteen years. We do live on a single-family street. There are no other multifamily homes on our street. Unfortunately, I'm coming up here strongly opposed to the situation that's at hand. It's unfortunate. I feel as though what's being presented is going to diminish the integrity and character of the neighborhood. There may be other multifamily homes on the adjacent streets, but on New Street, there are none. This does not fit into the street itself. It's a very short street, so it does pose many issues. One being the congestion. I don't agree with what has been said. There will be additional traffic. There will be a minimum of eight cars. That's without including visitors, deliveries, if there's an emergency, emergency vehicles coming up and down the street. We already have an issue currently. If a fire truck or ambulance comes down the street itself, they have to back up to get back down the street. So I'm not sure how this would be in effect if there was condos put onto this property. How would a fire truck even get in and out of there? I'm not sure how that would take place. I'm also concerned about sewage, water, electricity. We're adding basically wear and tear to the neighborhood. I also feel as though it's opening the door to other possibilities of putting condos within the area. I know they are allowed in the surrounding areas, for example, the Marshall Street apartments. But again, on our street, they don't, they don't belong there. I know there's other things that I have, but this is just a very upsetting issue to all the neighbors on the street. And I do believe I'm speaking for all of them. They're not all present tonight. So I hope you can take that all into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me make sure there's no questions for you.
Yeah, you said you live at ten New Street. Looks like there, the house to your right is six and eight. And you said there was no multifamilies. Is that correct, that it's six and eight?
I'm not sure what numbers those are.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, we can't take communication or testimony without being.
So there may be one to the side of me that has an upper unit and a lower unit. It is one family, but I believe they did rent out the top. So I don't know if that would be considered, is that considered multifamily? I mean, maybe it is multifamily in a way, but not a condo unit. We're not talking townhouses. This is a completely different situation. Condos are a completely separate subject, as far as I'm concerned. They're not related, they're not the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has questions, concerns, or opposition regarding the fifteen New Street proposal?
Carl Roberts, nine A New Street here in Nashua. I'm two houses down from him. Not against it, not for it. My concern is the same condos, are we creating a condo association now? Who's going to be taking care of like the yard maintenance, the outside of the, the building and stuff? Bob takes good care of his yard. His yard is immaculate all summer long. Is that going to continue? Is he owning these units as well and renting them out? Or is he selling each individual unit? And now we have to deal with four individual homeowners? But then again, who's owning the lot? Is he selling off the lot? Or is he owning the lot? That's a big question and concern. Also concerned with water that runs down the street. I know where they put in the new water lines, the sewer lines, the new gas lines. But at my house, I still have problems with water some days. It's low water pressure. I've had pan and check out to my house. There's nothing they can do about it without tearing up the whole street and putting a new water line through to make it bigger. We just not started noticing similar problems. Sewer lines the same way. When they redid the sewer lines, is there enough sewer line now to put four more houses, eight more bathrooms, eight more people showering and going to the bathroom? More concerns of that nature. Concerns also with parking on the street. If people have, if they're parking two houses, two cars in each of those, and they each have somebody over, now where are those people going to park? The street's already tight enough as it is. Someone parks on one side, someone parks on the other. You can't get an emergency vehicle down the street. You can't get another car down the street, an oversized car, especially if people don't park tight enough to the sidewalk or to the curb on the other side. Something else we may need to consider is only one, one side parking on that street. I may need to talk to my ward alderman about having that second side, no parking. So that, safety is a big concern. Front of my house is the only fire hydrant. Is that fire hydrant sufficient to add four more units at the same time? Or do we need to now be adding a second fire hydrant to add water if ever, anything was to ever happen to any of our neighbors? So those are just questions that I have about adding four more units. And then again, when I sit in my backyard in the summertime, I'm going to look straight at four units. I'm not going to look at the green space that I have, Bob's pool, and everything else that's going on. It's going to be straight to four, you know, seat over pool, but now you're going to see four more units. There's not more four units on the street. We are either a single family or we're a two-family. That's, that's what the street call, that's what it is. You know, if they were all facing front with this, like, like the rest of the street does, that would make more sense. But it's probably not wide enough to put the four units with four driveways facing the street versus on the side. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a designer of that. I just, I just think it's odd and out of, out of character of the neighborhood. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Let me see if the board has any questions for you. I think we're all set. Thank you. Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding the fifteen New Street proposal? Seeing none, Attorney Pearlman, you can come back up and address any of those items you wish to, they were ready.
Mr. Chairman, members, I have to say that I misspoke and Ms. Valcourt was correct in one regard in that the city defines multifamily units as, multifamily housing as three or more units. And I went through the city's GIS and assessor's maps, and I identified, you can see on my sheet, all the, all the lots in the area that have more than one unit. So some of these, for example, on New Street, I can tell you didn't, I didn't list them all, but for example, on New Street, the three more-than-one-unit buildings are, let's call them duplexes, apartment, two, two units, they're not a multifamily. Other buildings in this area are multifamily, three, four, and five, six, seven units. But I just want to clarify that, that there are mainly two-family units in the area. The four, excuse me, the three lots directly behind us on Mulvaney are all two-unit houses. So just to correct that misstatement on my part, but there are a lot of multifamilies in the area, a lot of two families that we have to answer some questions. The, we believe that we are maintaining the character of the neighborhood, we're keeping the fifteen New Street. The four units are proposed, we kind of tuck back on the lot. The four units are intentionally small to fit onto the lot. And as a result, they're not going to generate a lot of additional traffic. They're not the type of units that are going to have like four or five kids in a big house. They're typically professional individuals or couples with minimal traffic coming and going. The firetracks, the water pressure, the sewer line, all, all good concerns. But those are all, those are all existing conditions that we're going to have to address as we go forward with this project. We're going to have to address those with city engineering, city fire, city planning board. The units themselves are likely to be sold as condominium units such that all four-unit owners will own the lot together. That's still to be determined. Bob McIntosh could rent these units out and maintain ownership, but more likely than not they're to be sold as condominium units so that the condominium association, all four own the, own the lots, own the, own the common area of the whole lot together, and they each own their own units. And I've done, you know, many, many, many condominiums over the years. They work, I'm not concerned about the quality of the, of the outside area of the condominium. And I would say, Mr. Chairman, if I could have just one minute with my client before we close out the public, public hearing, just one minute, if I could, please. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, so thank the board very much.
All right, thank you. And then one of the two of you can come back up if you can just decide between the two of you and then, neither of you has to come back up, it's your choice, but yeah. And name an address again, sorry.
Again, Melissa Valcourt at ten New Street. I find it very unfortunate that in none of the side work or, I don't know how to word it exactly, but how would you not know about the sewer and all the placement and what is needed in order to move forward with this project? I do want to say thank you for acknowledging the mistake that was made regarding the multifamily. I do appreciate that. I just think at this point, this is a matter of greed, unfortunately. This is basically what the issue comes down to. That's really all I have to say at this point.
All right, thank you. I think we're probably set for questions.
Thank you.
Is there any question?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, there is, I guess.
So do you feel there'd be a significant difference if there were three units there versus four?
I mean, I'm opposed to any of it, to be honest with you. I don't think it fits into the neighborhood, the integrity, the character, the, the outside streets, yes, they do have that, but not on this street. This street is a very small street with all older homes that are mainly single-family homes. There might be a rental on top for two places on the street, but that's because it's within the family. They're family renters. So I don't feel like it fits. Obviously, if it's already been okay for them to have the two, then that's better than three or four, absolutely. But I don't agree with the congestion and traffic not being there. It will be there. I mean, I've lived on the street long enough to know what exists already as far as traffic. And we don't have that many houses on the street. I believe there may be ten, I don't know the exact number. So I do feel like it will significantly increase. I mean, we're talking eight homeowners. And to address the issue as far as homeowners also, it's being said that they don't know at this point if it's going to be rented or owned. And they're saying that there's not going to be kids. Well, how would you know if you're selling, how many people are going to reside in the home? That's not a stipulation that you can put into selling a home. Even if there's only two bedrooms, it doesn't mean there's not going to be five or six people living there. I mean, we know what's happening in the city of Nashua currently. And people don't mind having several people in a room, so we don't know how many people are going to live there. Just because there's only maybe eight spots available for use.
Can I ask you to wrap it up there? Because I think you've made the point.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. All set? Okay.
So that closes the public hearing and we'll open the public meeting. Anybody want to start? Just me, or you look like you're ready to.
I appreciate the passion of the folks on this street. It is fascinating to me that with ten or twelve houses on the street, we've had two cases in, in two sessions for New Street. So, so to let the folks in the audience know, we did get some, some letters from, some of the abutters from Mulvaney Street, also in opposition. So this, this is a really interesting spot in that it's the, the largest lot in this general area. It's at the end of a dead-end street, and it's right up against the back of a very large apartment complex. Very nice for the folks in your street, there's no cut through to the, to the apartment complexes. I think the amount of traffic would go up dramatically. We have seen these type of cases before, and, you know, Mr. McIntosh has to have the ability to not, to subdivide the lot legally, which is why we're here. You know, as Attorney Pearlman had, had spoken to, they could put three townhouses on there right now and we, we wouldn't be here. They're going for four smaller units, which is why we're here. You know, Attorney Pearlman said that they, they made some, did quite a bit of thought into how they wanted to, to situate these, these units. And I actually like the way that he said that with, with their back porch is looking onto the, to the, to the apartment complex, and I think that's fair. And the folks who originally reached out to us from, I think it was Mulvaney Street, I may be saying the wrong name of the street, would be looking at the side of their units and, you know, basically being as good neighbors as they could. You know, I appreciate that, it sounds like Mr. McIntosh has, has a beautiful yard, takes care of it, the neighbors appreciate that. I know that's the type of neighbor I would, I would love to have, and I do have, but I would love to have that, and I know why that's appreciated. The city is working to find many of these different type of lots to put housing in there if possible. I do see this as good, a good transition from the, the single and, and two-family units around them into these large apartment complexes. If, I wouldn't have voted for this if it was like sitting at like four New Street right in the middle of all the houses, but it's the end of the dead end. I do believe with the type of units that they're proposing, you know, that's, that's the type of housing the city's looking for, for new homeowners to get into the homeownership market, or folks who are transitioning out of larger houses into the smaller houses, downsizing, if you will. So that being said, one of the things that, that, you know, we'll never know here on the planning board is, you know, how, how good is the water pressure? Is there enough sewer to get out of there, get, get the waste out of there? What we are counting on is that when we get these packets, that the folks from the city are going to let us know if there's an obvious problem. Like, we know that New Street has, has the water, has the electric, has the sewer, so theoretically, they should be able to handle the addition of, of four more units. Planning board is going to get a lot deeper into this. When they get there, the city engineers will be involved. Where we are right now, it's just at the part of the process where it's conceptual. That being said, I, I am in favor of this project. I do think this is well thought out and will fit well at the end of the street. And while everybody's not. everybody's not on board with that, and I'm sorry to hear that, I do believe that as proposed, this is a good use of the property.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Mr. McCarver.
I don't disagree. I think with Mr. Neely's comments, I guess where I struggle a little is with the character of the neighborhood, and is this out of the character of the neighborhood? Frankly, I struggle with what is the character of the neighborhood. It's a small street, you know, individual homes, yet when you drive down it, you can't help but notice that you're looking at a giant apartment complex. So I guess I'd love to hear some other thoughts on kind of what's the character of the neighborhood and other people's thoughts on is this consistent with it or not?
Mr. Sylvia.
I guess part of the question there is what consists of the neighborhood? Is it just the street, or is it all the streets around? I know Attorney Pearlman said that if you look further out onto, say, Ald Street, this would be fairly common. So how far are we looking to expand as part of the comparable properties here? Just the street or other streets nearby?
I think it's always a little bit nuanced, you know, so I think it's really up to us to make that judgment of how far we think we should be considering for what the neighborhood is, and each of us might have our own thought about that, but sometimes it's very obvious, obviously, just the way something is been built or whatever, developed, when things have different stages and, you know, even just like the fact that the street is a dead-end street, kind of isolates it more so in some ways, but again, you know, some of the other streets right nearby are still probably pretty similar, so again, I think it's a little bit up to us ultimately to jump there. Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, when I drive down that street, the thing that jumps out at me is the Marshall Street Apartments, the large, very large buildings, and it's almost, you know, it's hard to notice the individual houses that are on the street. The proposal here, and we're, this board is only really considered, considering the density of the use, puts these four small townhomes tucked basically in the back corner of the lot, as far away from the existing homes on New Street as is possible to do, basically tucked up right against the Marshall Street Apartments. Yeah, they could have done three. Four seems reasonable for this use. You know, I would be a little bit concerned about any additional traffic because it is a small, narrow street, but I don't see a reason to oppose this proposal at this time.
Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, I also note that Attorney Pearlman said they were just over the border of what they need in terms of square footage, and they could have had three units that were larger, and it would have been comparable in terms of parking. Also, another thing, talking about what Mr. Lionel said, traffic is more of a planning board concern if I'm understood, so we're more interested in the square footage and the cars there, because, so the planning board will look at that if this moves forward.
Mr. Boucher.
Again, I think I have the similar thoughts that have been expressed so far. Again, I think we do consider, you know, undue traffic, you know, the traffic, some impact that can happen, but again, the uniqueness of this property is, again, it's at the end of the street, one of the largest lots, and, you know, as we look at the neighborhood, I do appreciate those homeowners who have single-family homes, and I know it's difficult. It has to be difficult, and I, you know, appreciate that they've come out and talked to us about it. But again, I think the homeowner has a right to develop their property. Again, the, you know, the three, as was said before, the three townhouses could have been put up without us getting into this application. So, again, as Mr. Lionel said, I'm kind of indifferent to the extra, the four units. I think it's close enough. I think that there's been some care for the sizing of the units, and I do believe that the planning board is very professional and will take this seriously, and again, the concerns are all valid. The water situation's valid. This building will have to be sprinkled, sprinkled, fire sprinkler, so there's going to be required infrastructure, and if it's not there, it'll have to be put in at the cost of the owner, not the cost of the city. So, again, I'm just saying a lot that, that I'm familiar with some of this stuff, and so it can't just happen and it make it worse for the residents that are there. There is minimum pressures that are required for water, et cetera, and so those all have to make sure that those are maintained for city services, you know, servicing those people that live there. So, again, I think that I don't see any reason not to approve the application, and, you know, as we talk about the neighborhood, like Mr. Shaw says, it's very different for everybody, we can look at it differently, but I think that what really, for me, it's the fact that the abutting property is not a street, a street's over, but properties are budding, you know, the large complex there, we got, you got some, you got a commercial application, kind of, what's that building off of Ald Street there?
Southern Hampshire.
Yes, Southern Hampshire Services, so you've got a large lot there. And again, I think there's something to be said that where the location of this is is really at the end of the street, and it's not in the middle of the street. So I, right now, don't see any reason why I would, could deny this application.
I guess I'll weigh in. I think I'm bidding the minority. I can't quite get the support on this, and I look at the, I mean, and oftentimes I feel like I am more generally swayed by like, okay, take, look at a total parcel and the total density of what's being proposed. Part of my problem with that is, one, the five units, if you look at, you know, the equation with the five units, it's still over 1,000 square feet short, and I realize in some ways that's not a lot, but the fact is, it's already going beyond what would be allowed if it was done up. Also, the lot proposal is to split it up roughly 60%, 40%, and I understand that, you know, and the single-family home is retaining roughly the 40% of the area, but that also means you're looking at that much more density with the proposed four units. So I guess, and I really do appreciate, and some of the discussion and the thought about like, yeah, that, you know, the kind of, the looming apartment building, the fact that technically they are, you know, in a butter, so there's, you know, that's immediate, kind of different usage. But I guess I just, I don't see where the hardship is or where the, why the benefit to the property owner of allowing for the, what I, you know, have to, some, even though it's maybe sounds, not trying to be extreme on this, but excessive density to be doing this when there's clearly the ability to do three units here, and that would be something that could be allowed. And maybe the applicant will, depending on what we do, would be, you know, go back and consider that, and if somebody asked about like, you know, the one neighbor, you know, what it thought it was about, you know, three versus four, not really wanting any of that density, I get that, and I appreciate that. I guess I just, I can't see that I can get past why to go beyond what would be allowed if you even do the math, and I already feel like things are skewed the wrong way in some regards, and I think there's been a lot of good care and a lot of good thought that's been put into this, but I just can't, can't get to the point of seeing how I can justify the density, so.
Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, you have some good points that I really had not considered about going over, overboard on the density, and that there are really no special conditions of the property that make it appropriate to have four units there. So, you know, maybe a less dense approach would be more appropriate and still provide a benefit to the home, to the Mr. McIntosh. Four units at the end of the street could be considered excessive.
Mr. Neely.
So I am in favor of some type of development down there, because I do believe Mr. McIntosh should be able to subdivide this property. I would actually like to hear from the other board members as well, their thoughts on the three versus four. At this point, honestly, I could be swayed either way. Something's going to go in, and Mr. McIntosh is going to get something down there. Whether it's three or four, I think we should have a little more discussion about.
Yeah, and I'll just quick, at least comment a part of that. Yeah, I, I mean, I guess, I think it might not be the most preferred thing from some of the neighbors, and I understand how that is, but, yeah, I also think that the landowner, Mr. McIntosh, should be able to do something with that property and whatever he chooses to do. I just feel like I'm seeing something that's, it's kind of like the, I think there's a reasonable solution to do three units, and the fourth unit is just, I think, beyond what I think is needed, and I don't see the justification, so. But, yeah, I have, I think, you know, I think three units would be okay, basically, so. But others want to comment? Mr. Patrick.
I think what we're being asked to approve, since, you know, he can build three, I don't see one extra unit as being an unreasonable ask.
And maybe. Okay. Sylvia.
And this might be a question for staff. I don't know the exact part of Chapter 190 on this, but if the applicant had the same amount of square footage, but it was three units versus four, that they wouldn't need to vary into the square footage, correct? It's just for...
Correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, in the end, I understand what you're saying, I think that's a good point, but in the end, it's kind of a moot point, because if they had the same amount of space and it was only three units, we wouldn't be here, and there could be just as many cars just with fewer units, so that's another thing to take into account.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, basically, something could be done like that without any, like, so this...
Yeah, it could go either way. You, yeah, you're absolutely right. There's, there could, you could say that there's no reason to have four versus three, and you could also say three and four are the same in terms of square footage, so it could go either way, I think.
Are we at a point where somebody might like to offer a motion? I'm not sure I, I mean, you know, early on, it seemed like there was a pretty strong sentiment or support for this. I'm not sure if anybody's really moved from their position. Mr. Lionel, you seem like you might be, but I don't know, you're at actually, per se, but.
All right, tell you what, I'll make the motion, and we'll see where it goes. This is, we do this from time to time. All right. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Robert McIntosh Jr., owner of 15 New Street, Sheet 28, Lot 15, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16 to allow four total townhouse units on a proposed new lot with 17,408 square feet, where 24,891 square feet is required. This is in the R8 Zone, Ward 7. Oh, excuse me, RB Zone, oh. Okay, my eyes are getting tired. Thank you. The board finds that granting the variance would be, would not be contrary to the public interest, it, because it creates additional housing and has been designed in a way to minimize the impact on the surrounding area. We believe the spirit of the ordinance would not, would be observed because this is residential housing in a residential area, and there is other very dense, very dense housing in the immediate vicinity, even if it's not exactly on New Street. Granting the variance would be substantial justice to the homeowner, allowing him to develop the property. We discussed how there were various alternatives, he could develop it anyway with one fewer home on the new lot and would not even need to be here, and the opinion was expressed that four instead of three is not really that big an ask. We have a statement from a real estate professional saying that values of surrounding properties would not be diminished, and we believe that denying this variance would be unnecessary hardship to the applicant because there's not a fair, substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property because of the oversized lot and the connection to the surrounding large apartment buildings. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the area variance.
Second by Mr. Neely, thank you. Discussion on the motion? I'll, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I think this will be a very interesting one. It was a good, good point Mr. Sylvia brought up, that, I mean, we've talked about the fact something's going to go there, and whether it's three or four, you know, obviously can make the townhouses a lot bigger if they wanted to, which arguably means, means larger families, more cars, et cetera, et cetera, so. So thank you for bringing that up. I think that's certainly going to sway me towards voting for the four units, but I'm just interested to hear what the rest of the group has to say.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. McCarver.
I'm leaning towards not voting in favor, and I think the two, the two things that I'm still struggling with are, I do struggle with the character of the neighborhood, but I also struggle with, you know, whether or not there really is a fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and limiting density, given the, you know, you limit density to prevent overcrowding, to prevent overburdening, you know, our public systems, streets, water, sewer, et cetera. In particular, to me, it's the impact of the street, the additional traffic, and, you know, I can't speak to it myself, but testimony is certainly that we've heard about the impact of public systems. So I guess that's, that's what's inclining me to oppose the motion.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor? And it looks like two, Mr. Boucher and Mr. Neely, all opposed, and that's Mr. McCarver, Mr. Lionel, and Mr. Shaw, so.
So, all right, so that motion failed, and then we need to make a motion to deny. Make a motion on behalf of Robert McIntosh Jr., owner of 15 New Street, Sheet 28, Lot 15, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16 to allow four total townhouse units on a proposed new lot with 17,408 square feet, where 24,891 square feet is required. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 7. The board finds that granting the variance would, would be contrary to the public interest because of excessive density to this narrow, small and narrow street with additional traffic and that it would cause. We believe the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed because the ordinance is designed to limit density in terms of overuse impact of the neighborhood. Granting the variance would do substantial justice to the, to the applicant, but, and we have testimony that values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. They're unnecessary hardship, there are no special conditions of the property that would make it reasonable to have this level of over-density. Therefore, there is a fair, there is a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application. Therefore, I make a motion to deny this area variance.
Second by Mr. McCarver. Any discussion on a motion to deny? Seeing none, all in favor of denying, and that's Mr. McCarver, Mr. Lionel, Mr. Shaw, and opposed, and that's Mr. Neely and Mr. Boucher, so the denial passes three to two, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And they can appeal.
We'll move on to case number six. Let's give folks a moment to clear the room. Are we okay without a break or anything?
Yep. nearing the finish line.
Case number six is Dennis C. Malvers and Cassandra Stellus Malvers, owners. The address is 455 South Main Street, Sheet 112, Lot 125. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E, Subsection 1, to exceed the maximum driveway width where 24 feet is allowed, 41.7 feet is proposed. And this is in the R9 Zone, Ward 7. Welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, it's good to be back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Prunia and Pearlman here in Nashua, here on behalf of Cassie Stellus Malvers and Dennis Malvers, owners of 455 South Main here in Nashua. Again, I have a handout for the board and I'm going to walk you through a chronology of how we got here and take us through the criteria.
Mr. Chairman, we're seeking a dimensional variance to a relatively new ordinance. The 190-17E2 requires a 24-foot driveway at the right-of-way and continuing back to the front yard setback. As the driveway was installed at 455 South Main, we have a driveway of 26.5 feet at the right-of-way on South Main and then it, it flares out to 41.7 at the front yard setback. I have some plans before you. You're wondering why you have some plans before you. I'll explain. The Stellus family purchased this large lot from Rosemary Kennett in 2020. This lot is, and I grew up in South Nashua. They drove by this house my entire life, growing up, and it was just a big wooded lot with one house on it. The Stellus family purchased it. And if you look to my second plan that I have with you, Plan Number 4, 40872, it kind of, and I'll come back to the first plan. But originally, if you look at the layout of that plan, Hillsborough County Plan Number 40872, the Stellus has originally contemplated a six-lot subdivision. And you can see how the six lot, you know, lays out very cleanly, evenly sized lots on Old Field and then on South Main. As the Stellus is talking about how they want to see this lot developed and what's going to happen with this lot, Cassie and Dennis said, you know what, we want to live here. We're going, we're going to buy one of these lots. And so what they, what they wanted to do is they doubled up the lot. And when you see on Plan Number 40796, this is the first iteration of the plan that the planning board approved after the Stellus family bought these lots. And you can see that the existing dwelling that was going to be taken down comprised a double lot. Two, two of the six lots was, was combined into one and that's where Cassie and Dennis planned to move, have their home and have, have a double lot of the six. So there's five, five total. Then, coming back to Plan Number 40872, some months later, Cassie and Dennis said, you know what, we would prefer, we want to have the double lot, but we prefer, we prefer to have it a little bit further down South Main Street, a little bit more privacy, so they don't have the, the two roads of Weld and South Main. So they're just on South Main. So at the end of the day, this plan that the planning board approved, 40872, was approved in January 2021 by the planning board. It's been recorded at the registry. That's what we have today. That's the plan that we're working with that, that is before you tonight. So we have a double lot on South Main. And the Stellus has then sold off three of the lots. Russell Laporte was the builder for all three of these lots. And that was intentional when selling the lots. They sold the lots with Russell Laporte as the builder because they wanted to maintain consistency and uniformity of the little neighborhood that they were creating. And so Russell Laporte was our builder for the first few lots. Then Russell Laporte became the builder for Cassie and Dennis for their home that you see today. They broke ground in spring 2022. In my GIS map that I have, it was actually the most recent aerials that the city has from the public GIS. This is from 2022 and this is just when they were breaking ground. And you can see that the dirt, dirt has been moved around, but there's no structure at that time. The house itself is designed as a good-sized house with a three-bay garage attached to the house and then a separate carriage house with a two-bay garage and then a little bit of a apartment-type setting on the carriage house, a separate building, if you've been by the site. The instructions to Mr. Laporte was we just build us a driveway to service our three-bay garage to a house and our two-bay garage on the carriage house. And that was, and then that was it. They said, you know, we trust you. He built, Russell Laporte built the other three homes without any issues. So we, we had no reason to think that we had a concern. October 2022, some of you may remember, this house was subject to a fire. We believe it was arson, but the fire department couldn't nail, the fire marshal's office couldn't nail that down. But it, it tied up the house for a long period of time, six plus months. The fire marshal had the house under their jurisdiction. We couldn't touch it. And so finally, 2023, 2024, we get back to building the house that you see there today. Driveway is installed, Russell Laporte dies. April 2024, as the house is not quite nearing completion, but maybe 70% complete, Mr. Laporte unfortunately passes away. Cassie and Dennis bring in Michael Cass, a local builder, to kind of finish out the house and to help, you know, the final features, the final drywall, carpeting, all that stuff. So the house is back on track. October 2024, Mark Jennings is a city surveyor working for the city. I believe he lives in the south end. He's driving by, he takes a look and he, he gives a heads-up to somebody. I don't recall if it was to staff or to our folks or to maybe to Michael Cass. He simply said, hey, your driveway looks a little wide. You're going to have to deal with that if you want to see out. If you want to certificate of occupancy, you're going to have to address your driveway. We found out about it. We turn to Hainer Swanson, say please measure it. And the measurement are with the packet today. And as, as indicated, we have driveway that's too wide by two and a half feet at the right-of-way and then it flares out to 41.7 feet at the front yard setback. So that's, that got us here today. The area that we have, Mr. Chairman, the members, we are on South Main Street. We're in the R8 district. We have, you know, we all know it well. Riviera College, Nashua Country Club across the street. We have residential neighbors on our side of the street. And you go down toward Anders Lane, then you have, you have residential neighbors on South Main, Anders and Farmington. And so we have, you know, a well-known, well-established neighborhood. And we have, we have South Main Street. And I would submit to you that South Main is not your typical residential street. It's not like Old Field. It's not like Weld right next door. It's a faster street. The speeds are, you know, because there's no driveway, especially with the country club, you know, people tend to go a little bit faster. I'm guilty as charged. My parents' station wagon went a little too fast in this stretch of roadway. But, you know, it is not your typical residential street, you know, like a new street or something that we would normally see elsewhere. It's a bit of a, bit of a collector road on South Main. Our driveways are, are, are far away. And what I mean by that is, if you take a look at the aerial that I provided, I, I called out four lots, 449, 451, 455, and 457, South Main, all on our side of the street. And my point here is, I want you to understand that the two lots to our north, 459 and 451, take their driveways off of Weld Street. And our next neighbor to the south, 457, South Main, takes their driveway on the opposite side of their home. So everyone's far enough away, hundreds of feet away from any, any driveway. And so what we don't have is a series of driveways, 24 feet, right on top of each other, that in and of itself can kind of create some traffic problems. So we have a lot of separation between neighboring driveways. Michael Cass, we asked Michael Cass to give us a proposal. What would it take to bring the driveway into code, into compliance? And you have his proposal at the back of my packet. The, I was talking to Jim Petropoulos about what, what exactly is the purpose of the driveway width. And, and the best we could do is, well, it's really more of an aesthetic issue. You have the safety issues. You don't want driveways too close to each other, but you also don't want a ton of asphalt all over the city, you know, with too much driveway for a single, for a single home. But I believe we're okay in that regard because we have the double lot, we have driveways far enough, far from us, we have the speed on South Main Street. There's a safety issue because it allows a wide, a little bit of wider driveway allows a smoother turn off of South Main. A wider driveway allows the back out of the driveways. And so you don't have people backing out onto South Main. We can turn on the driveway and head forward onto South Main instead of backing onto South Main, which, you know, some, some people do, but it would certainly scare me. So that's the, how we got here, Mr. Chairman. That's kind of the lay of the land. So if the board had any questions, I would just run through my, my criteria.
Go ahead.
When the, and you have to picture this driveway when it's, when it's complete, because it's when, when it's complete. If you have been by the site facing the home on the left-hand side of, of the home, you can see that the Stellus, the Stellus Malvers have installed a bunch of ornamental shrubbery on the, on the south side of their home. And they're going to do the same when complete, when we have the, when the home is complete and all the landscaping and, and the, you know, the ornaments and whatnot are installed on site. So it's going to, it's going to fill in and it's not going to, it's not going to be overly intrusive to the area. The, in the packet, oh, that's right. I, I gave you the Michael Cass quote because I didn't see that was in your packet. In your packet, you have the statement from our neighbors, the Coglins. They have no objection, no concern with the driveway as it's currently located. We don't believe that a variance request is contrary to public interest. We don't see they were altering the character of the neighborhood or injuring any public rights of anyone. We believe it were the, going to be in the spirit of the ordinance, again, because of the aesthetic of, too much asphalt is not present just because the driveways are far apart from one another. When the landscaping is installed, when, when the house is fully built and fully mature, you know, we're going to have the, the, the effect won't be as dramatic as it is today with the, the landscaping not complete. We have the south, 457, home was kind of buffered by their own home and the driveway being out on the other side of the street. We don't believe, we believe, excuse me, we believe that substantial justice would be done because this allows some, a safety element for the applicant with respect to maintaining the existing driveway. The cost of installation, the cost of removal is, is, you weigh that against, we really see no harm to the city, no public rights being affected by this. We believe the balancing test of substantial justice weighs in favor of the applicant. The, we don't see that the existing driveway is going to impact any neighboring property values. And we believe just the unique nature of this lot as a double lot. And when you consider the purpose of the, of the 24-foot requirement, we don't believe there's any fair and substantial reason to prohibit the existing driveway. We want to keep it as is. It's an existing driveway for residential use in a residential district. We believe we have a reasonable proposal to the board. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you and answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Lionel?
I'm, I admit I'm, I'm a little bit confused looking at the, the various plot plans.
Sure.
You had talked about the, the double lot. And to me, the double lot looks like it's Lot 11, but 455 is Lot 125. Oh, I s...
That, that... Okay, I'm sorry. I, I went...
Yeah, so the first plot you showed us, the double lot is on the right-hand side. And then the second one, now the double lot is on the left-hand side.
Exactly.
I think it's, it was also confusing because of the existing building that's, you know, was there and the driveway that was there, et cetera. But I think that might have been... So this, this plot is what is...
Okay, so this is what it looks like.
This actually matches to him.
Yeah, okay.
You can kind of see this ensemble.
And I apologize. I went a little fast to that just because I'm so familiar with this. So what, so the...
I think the fact that the, the double lot got swapped.
It got, it got switched.
It's hard to discern on the plan.
Yeah. We moved the double lot away from Weld. And then, so what you look at, the, the aerial is what we have today. You can see that the, the lot itself is, you know, twice as big as the other lots on this whole subdivision.
I'm going to admit that when I went to look at it, I mistakenly believed that it was Lot 11 that was under, under consideration with its driveway on Weld Street. But apparently it's not the case. So I, I didn't actually see where the, what the driveway looked like for Number 455. So, and it doesn't, it's hard to tell on this diagram what the driveway looks like now.
Well, in the packet that was provided, there is a certified plot plan from Hainer Swanson.
Yeah, I see, I'm looking at that, yes.
And so you can see that's, that's the double lot. That's 455, South Main. It's Lot 125 on the subdivision plan. And you can see Jim Petropoulos had little hand notes where the driveway is 26.5 feet at the right-of-way at South Main and then it flares out to 41.7.
Okay, all right. I got that now. All right, thank you. I see it now. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you again.
So anybody that would like to speak in favor of the application of 455, South Main Street for the driveway? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding the driveway proposal for 455, South Main Street? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. McCullough?
I, I do support the application. I think really primarily for a couple of reasons, but, but mainly that it is a double lot. And if it were two lots, you could have two 24-foot driveways. So overall, you're not seeing an excessive amount of pavement in front of the building to the point that was made. If I'm looking at the plot plan, the lots to the right don't have access on South Main. So you're not seeing more driveways there. And similarly, the driveway on the lot on the left-hand side is far on the other side. And it is a rather mixed character area. You kind of come right out of Riviera College, you've got the golf course across the street. So I, I don't, I wouldn't see this being out of character with the neighborhood. And I think, you know, the burden to the owner of having to remove the additional pavement, there wouldn't really be any benefit to the public having to do that.
Any other comments?
Mr. Lionel, if you didn't see that house, it's a beautiful driveway, if you went to the wrong house. But that being said, you know, this, this board heard a case two weeks ago, also on South Main Street, and, and, and passed it for somebody to get an extra driveway and part of what they talked about was safety. South Main Street can be very difficult to pull in and out of. Having an extra two feet there at, at the, at the actual street side is only going to help folks entering and exiting this, this property safely. The flare-out is a natural flare-out. You know, they've got the carriage house in the, the back right-hand side there. So, so it, you know, it affords the ability to turn around once again for safety reasons. But I think the crux of the matter is, is that these folks would incur a bill of $17,800 to pull it out for no discernible purposes. You know, we, we have heard many times over the years that, that, you know, it's going to cost me a lot of money to do this. This is the first time I've seen somebody actually give us a quote for how much it's going to cost to, to pull this out. So really, at the end of the day, when I saw that... So really, at the end of the day, when I saw that, that put me in favor, just basically based on that fact, that they have no contractor they can go back to, to, you know, to get the money back or to pull it out. I know we've asked that in the past of a couple of folks who we've gone and said, hey, you've got to pull out the pavement. In this case, there, there is nobody. So these, these homeowners would be stuck with a $17,000-plus dollar bill. So for those reasons, I, I think we should keep it as is and approve the variance.
Yeah, I'm in support for some of the same reasons already noted, and I think, I think the 26 feet is actually probably not going to be even discernible by most individuals. And then, you already alluded to it in some of this, but the fact that the 41.7, I think it is, is part of the flare, and so it's, it's already set back. I just think there's a natural look to this that makes sense, and again, all the other reasons already stated, so I think, I think it's quite reasonable.
Somebody like to make a motion?
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for Dennis C. Malvers and Cassandra Stellos Malvers, owners 455 South Main Street, Sheet 112, Lot 125, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, Subsection E, Subsection 1, to exceed the maximum driveway width, 24 feet allowed, 41.7 proposed. This is in the R9 district in Ward 7. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. We discussed the safety factor of the 26 feet at the curbside on South Main Street, which is a relatively busy thoroughfare. This would allow folks to get in and out of the driveway relatively quickly. In addition, we discussed that the larger driveways could allow folks to turn around in the driveway, be able to nose back out of the driveway for safety purposes. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed. What is happening here is a lot of this comes down to the 41.7-foot flare-out that the contractor did not observe, but it does make a natural flow to the carriage house, which is on the, on the back right-hand side of the property. We do not feel that taking out the pavement in a, in a strict interpretation of the ordinance would benefit the city or any of the local neighbors, as most of the neighbors have no close driveways and would not be affected in any way. Granting the variance would do substantial justice in that the applicants would not have to rip out the pavement, incurring a $17,800 cost, which is the approximate, approximation of what was provided to us in a, in a quote. We do not have any reason to think that the value of the surrounding property would be positively or negatively affected, and the unnecessary hardship to these, to the applicant is that the contractor went rogue, laid down concrete, excuse me, pavement in areas he should not have. However, they have no way to pull that money back from him or to pull it out from that same contractor as he has passed away. And once again, as noted earlier, these folks would be, have to pay a $17,800 bill to do so, and we do not think that positively affects the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously.
Thanks again, appreciate it.
All right, we'll move into our other business. We've got the upcoming agenda for the February 11 meeting, I guess. It's only a single case, I certainly don't see any regional impact to that. In that case, I think that should occur, as I would hope. We also have minutes from the last meeting from two weeks ago, the January 14 meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or feedback?
I saw a couple of typos. Page seven, the very last line, middle of the sentence, back, I think should be bad.
Yes.
And then the next page, under Daniel Cerro, 19 Hours Drive, the second sentence of that paragraph, it says fancy, but I think, I think it means fence, I think we want to say fence there. And then, page 16, this first full paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, line six, wedding cake that will be delivered, it says to-site, I think it should be off-site.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And then, I think one more. Ah, yeah, page 20, the paragraph starts with motion, line, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, visible should be invisible.
Yes. Good change. Would those changes noted, anything else, or is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Mr. McCarr, second by Mr. Leinen, thank you. Any discussion on the motions? All in favor? That passes unanimously. We also have a couple other items to potentially cover. That includes election of officers, and we do have the whole slate of the full-time members, so it's a good time to consider that. And we also want to look at updating the bylaws, that's something we usually do every few years anyhow, and talking to Mr. Durfee, we have a potential proposal that also might bear some relevance to the discussion about election of officers. So, Mr. Durfee, do you, did you end up bringing anything specific for us tonight on that, or talk to that?
I, I didn't get around to printing it. I have it, I can summarize. So last meeting was my first meeting to really sit, participate, and observe, and I had a thought as I was, I had stolen JP's note-taking materials, and I ended up taking notes as well, and JP did as well, and thank you for doing so. It occurred to me that to be an active board member, as well as observing clerking duties, you're doing double duty, and you may not be able to fully participate as an active board member. And the board has a staff person who is available to, to do that duty, and is not a voting member. I looked at some other towns, other towns do designate the staff person as the clerk of the board. For us to do this, it is a bylaw change, it's just kind of reiterating the duties. Changes I propose is just stating that the administrative officer, which is the technical term in our ordinance for myself, but any of my designees who would serve this board in this capacity, would serve as the clerk, this would be a non-voting position, and so long as a staff person serves in this role, the role of clerk would, would not have a vote. But essentially, that would be the change in the bylaws. I understand it's, it's not the most desirable officer position to hold, as it does come with some significant duties, aside from obviously the chair and running the meeting. So for your consideration.
So I don't know if anybody has any first reactions to that, Mr. Bouchette?
I do agree, because I volunteered to do this because frankly no one else wanted to do it. And Mr. McCarr did it for several years, and I felt that, you know, as a volunteer, it was, it was kind of my duty to do that because I understood that I had served as vice-chair and chair several times, and I figured it was time to let other people do that. So I said, hey, you know, I'll do it. Not, not my favorite thing, but definitely, I was more active when I was a clerk in participation than I was in, so that is one thing that is definitely correct in your, your assessment. So I would love to participate more, but again, you know, in making motions and all that, but you can't, occasionally, when we've only been three people, I've done that. But again, I think it's more difficult to do that, and you're headed somewhere else. So I would definitely support that, if it's possible, definitely would support that change.
I would agree.
Mr. Leinen and I both have also had shared all three roles throughout our time already, and I think we would agree that, that there are those limitations, and I think it would be a welcome change. Mr. Saviyan, would you-
Yeah, Mr. Falk already has a recording device at all the meetings anyway, so it seems like it's kind of superfluous having a member of the board be the clerk when Mr. Falk's already taken notes, so might as well have him or, or Mr. Durfee or someone else from staff do it since they're already recording.
And I, you know, part of me wanted to ask a question, but I realized in all my time serving, there's never been a zoning board that I've, meeting that I've attended that there hasn't been a staff person present, if not more than one staff person. So it's not like we even really have to plan for that contingency, and if we would, I'm sure we could, we could certainly still take minutes if, if something like that happened. But like I said, I've never seen that.
Clerk pro tem.
Yeah.
So, so we'll, it sounds like there's reasonable support for that, and then if you can maybe send that out electronically.
I will.
Also, just, I would welcome, I would request that everybody just generally go through the, the bylaws. Every once in a while, we do realize, oh, this might be better to structure something a certain way. And we typically also with the bylaws, we will first have the changes at one meeting, and then wait until a following meeting to actually vote on the changes. So at this point, we wouldn't necessarily make any official changes until the second meeting in February, but perhaps next meeting in February, we would have one that we could consider and decide if we think that's where we're going to be, and then we'll just vote up or down at the following meeting would be what I would recommend based on past practice.
For the purpose of being quick about it, I could print them off now, distribute them, and you could review them. If you wanted to make a decision, you know, count this as your first meeting of consideration, and then go into February if that would be the one.
The only reason I'd say not to do that is just that I think it'd be good for us to review all the bylaw content again, and, and Mr. Patrick, maybe your comment?
My only comment would be, is that something we'd, we'd want to put on an agenda, so I guess in theory, if the public wanted to comment on our bylaws, they would know that we're considering it.
I'm not sure they have an opportunity to do that.
At least we've never, it's always been part of our other business to just conduct without any public input. And I think it's, it's really the will of the board for the bylaws, as I understand it, so, I mean, you know, somebody could, could send us correspondence now that, you know, we haven't had this conversation, but they could at any point in time as well. But, you know, but I don't think there's, I don't think there would be a need or even procedurally that we really set up to do that, so.
That's, that is probably a good idea, have it as other business on the agenda.
Yeah.
Nothing else, it's a reminder to all of us that we should be reviewing.
We will add that to the agenda for the next two meetings.
And then, so officers, I know I had suggested that especially now that Mr. McCarr and Mr. Neely are both full-time members, if either of you or both of you are interested in serving in one of the leadership positions, I certainly would encourage you to and welcome your service. So I kind of would like to see if either of you are interested. I'm, I'm more than happy to do something or nothing as far as any of those roles, I've kind of done, done the gamut already, and so, and I think, based on what we just talked about, I don't think it necessarily seems like it would make sense to say, oh, why don't you consider clerking, because I think it seems like we'll quickly move from that. Technically, we should probably, if we are going to vote on officers tonight, we should still elect a clerk, and then that position would essentially not necessarily need to continue, but I, I think for completeness, we should, or, you know, maybe Mr. Bouchette would be happy to just continue in that role for maybe a couple more meetings or something like that, so.
Can we elect Mr. Durfee as the clerk?
No, you can't, because I'm not actually a member in the way.
Oh, well, worth a shot.
The ones that are currently structured.
Worth a shot.
Mr. McCarr, Mr. Neely, either of you want to say anything about possibly serving?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll start. I had full expectation of walking in and saying, I'll be the clerk, just get my, I got my toes in the water there. So, so that being said, first and foremost, if one of the more established members wants to, to take over one of the top two positions, I wouldn't stand in the way of that. I'm always happy to serve, and, yeah, it's, if it's my turn, it's my turn. I think I'd be, I don't think, I don't, not really interested in the chairman spot, but maybe the, the vice chair, but, but I'm not opposed to whatever the, the board feels is appropriate.
Mr. McCarr?
I, I actually feel exactly the same way. I'm happy with the current slate that we have now, and, you know, if either of you didn't want to serve or wanted to serve in a different capacity, then I'd, I'd be happy to step in, but I'm certainly happy with the way things are now as well.
I mean, honestly, you guys are doing a great job, and, and I think we have full confidence when walking here that, that the two of you guys, you know, whether you're both here or one, run it very well, and the wealth of knowledge that you guys had, have is, is a great tool.
Will still be here.
Yeah.
We can, we can throw tomatoes from over there.
Sir, I get it.
My first op to was chair, vice chair, and chair years ago, a long time ago. I felt like I was in the dark a little bit, but the members at the time, Mr. Shaw, you were here. I don't know if anybody else was here at that time. They were all very helpful, so I, I got a lot of good, good help for that. So I, I wouldn't be afraid of it at all, to be honest with you. For you, and even Mr. McCarr, because I'm, he's used to talk in front of people all the time, but it'll be like old hat after a couple of friends.
Yeah, I, I served, I served as chair after, like, just like two or three years on, on the board, and, you know, it was fine, and, and I, I really think either of you would do a really great job.
I feel the same way. I think, I feel like the two of you could take chair or vice chair together, and have no qualms about it, regardless of which one took which slot. So, in fact, quite frankly, in a way, that would be my preference, just because one thing, and Mr. Bouchette more than anybody, but Mr. Leinen also, philosophy kind of generally of the membership of this board, just kind of like for a long time, has been just having all the members have an opportunity to cycle through. Now, I mean, granted, not, you know, if somebody doesn't want to serve in those roles, and I think, you know, we want to be sensitive to that, but I think, you know, especially right now, I think either of you could do a fine job, and if you have any interest in it, I think it'd be great, but it also, yeah, if you, so I think that we almost have the problem of everybody's like more than willing to do.
So I'll make it easy, right? I'll make a motion, and take it with Mr. Neely said about his choice. I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. McCarr as chair and Mr. Neely as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Well, how's Mr. McCarr feel about that? I'm not trying to back him in a corner.
I agree with you during the conversation, so, yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion? Oh, and then what about, do you want to nominate for clerk to kind of?
I'll nominate myself as clerk, assuming that you're all going to vote. Or you could put me back. That's fine, that's fine.
We could always have a reconsideration if, if, move through with the bylaws and-
Number three or four in a row would be fine. All right. So that would be, again, and I'll nominate, can I do that, nominate myself as clerk?
I'll, I'll second that.
I'll second, just so we-
With the whole slate? Yes, okay, yeah, all right. Good, 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 good.
Any other discussion? All in favor of that motion? And that passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I think that unless there's any other business for tonight.
8:58.
All right.
Thank you.
Closed.
Good job, everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations.